...comes forward, so I'm sure he's in the building. He's probably in a quick little meeting. So, um... Well called, Madam Clark.
Councilman Burgess.
Here.
Councilwoman Logan.
Here.
Councilwoman Martinado. Councilman Shelley. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warman.
Here.
Mayor Bateman.
They're all here, they're just not here yet. Okay, um, any additions, deletions, or referrals? City manager?
He's not even here.
Alright, city attorney says not that he's aware of. Alright, uh, the minutes, um...
I'll move the May 11th minutes.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commercial pass. Um, City of Homestead ground and facility lease agreement with clear wireless.
This is a, um, a routine agreement. We, uh, have ground leased with, uh, a cellular provider, and we have an agreement with them that other cellular companies are able to attach to that pole, and they pay us additional rent for that space, so this provides, um, additional rent and its approval of the co-location agreement, is a routine agreement.
And here's Mr. Valen, Mayor Valen.
I'll move the, uh...
And I'll second it.
Okay, we got it moved in second, uh, on the staff report.
I think I gave it in your app.
Oh, you did. Okay. Questions from council? Questions or comments? Your questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion carries. Alright, we're on, uh, C, item C. Um, truck bypass, this is, uh, entertain a motion?
Move it.
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. And I guess staff report is basic, we modified, I know it as well because I've been carrying it.
You're more than best than anybody else.
We modified the, uh, the resolution to, uh, to carry backup to the MPO board. Um, there has been a, um, a concession, uh, the Miami-Dade County School Board was, uh, was adamantly opposed to our truck bypass on 288th. Uh, after an hour and a half discussion, they agreed to support the truck bypass, providing that, um, we would limit the hours from four o'clock in the afternoon until seven o'clock in the morning. And, uh, I felt it was a good compromise. We've been at this for ten years, trying to get it done. So that means at four o'clock every day, the flashing lights will come on, and the trucks hopefully will turn on 288th, go to US-1, US-1 to Davis Parkway, Davis Parkway back to Chrome, Chrome to the market. So there's events that we have in the evening downtown, Ruth Campbell has, and others, the events that we have downtown, hopefully the trucks, I mean, the trucks won't be there from four on. And usually the events we have are in the evening. Uh, the, uh, the truck bypass, um, on Saturday and Sunday still is going to read from four to seven in the morning. So that's, I mean, if there's any further discussion with council or input, please give me, give me some now, because I go back in thirty days to hopefully get the, um, MPO board to support me, uh, on this truck bypass. So, the school board has said that they will, they will give us a letter of support if we'll take these hours from four PM to seven AM.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for explaining that, because that was the note that I had put down, why just four to seven AM, but, um, another thing that you need to always keep in mind is that most of the restaurants that have any intentions of coming out and putting the little cafe tables out are going to be evening time as well, so I'm, as long as we can get the school board on board, I'm fully supportive, and this has taken so long, so long.
Ten years.
And any changes right now would be just disastrous. So, I support it completely.
Thank you. Yeah, any further questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion carries. Next item, uh, finance enterprise, uh... Richard, you want to read the title, or Mr. Williams, either one? Florida Spectrum Environmental Services. Sorry. That's alright, I'll entertain a motion, that's what it was. Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, staff report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, my vice mayor members of the city council, this is, um, a piggybacking of, uh, Broward County, uh, contract, uh, for water testing. It's part of our, um, performance testing that we do at the plant, um, and it's done on a daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly basis sometimes. Uh, we have been using Florida Spectrum, uh, environmental, um, services for over twenty-four months now, and they have had a pretty good track record with us, so we're just extending the contract. And the, as you can see, the account balance show now that we have a hundred and eighty-two thousand, over a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars available. However, um, on a yearly basis, we pretty much, um, are at the hundred and twenty, so you will be saving a lot of money as a result of entering in this, this contract. What this contract does, it do for us is, um, it will lock the fees, uh, you know, for the, uh, the fee structure, uh, that they use, and the pickup charges will be, you know, will be saving between ten and twenty thousand dollars, uh, per year, so I highly recommend.
Questions and comments from council?
Yes. What is the, uh, amount budgeted for this item, uh, so far? I know that you, they put the account balance, but, um...
We budgeted, sorry, we have budgeted that amount, uh, but it fluctuates depending on the fees. What this contract would do exactly is, uh, lock those fees and save us, uh, between ten and twenty thousand dollars.
Right, um, but, um, what was the, uh, amount budgeted for it?
Uh, the total, I don't, I don't have...
Because you're showing, um...
I don't think there was a specific amount budgeted for this item. Uh, it was, well, there was a specific amount budgeted, but it was, staff did not have a, a certain number, but a ballpark number, and from that, as I said, we have been spending roughly about a hundred and twenty a year.
Okay.
So it's been under the budgeted amount.
Okay, okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Nays? Motion carries. Okay, next item, um, with the EAS RFQ 2403 amendment to PO for project nine-nine-one-five-point-four.
My computer's up, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay, I got it. That's it, I'm gonna entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Need to read the title of the reso.
Um, the title.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Accepting Proposal and Approving Work Authorization Between the City and EAS Engineering Pursuant to Continuing Contract Award Under RFQ 2403, Providing For An Effective Date.
I'll move it, Mayor.
Motion, thank you. Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Burgess.
Even though this is an RFQ, have we looked outside to make sure that these prices are competitive in today's economy at all?
Yes, we have, and we have been moving budget, uh, ever since we initiated, uh, consulting with, uh, EAS Engineering, Inc., from inception, from the moment that we constructed the track, uh, we were conditioned by DORM that they, we had to mitigate the, the, um, we have a mitigation area that we have to maintain, and they've, they have been working, monitoring, and mitigating the wetlands ever since, so...
Okay.
Yeah, well, he didn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
Have we, have we looked to make sure that the fees that he's requesting, and his hourly rates and all that are competitive with other people?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We have been shopping around and, and, you know, confirming that there are, and, you know...
Because my one concern is just because he's been here forever in today's economy, as I've said with other, other discussions up here, you know, that there are people that are hungry out there, and...
Yeah, there, for forty thousand, which is a typical amount that we have set aside, they have been, they have been on the budget all this year, so...
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Well then, can I offer this thought or suggestion then, in hearing, uh, Councilman Burgess' concerns? Uh, is there a cap that we could put on the miscellaneous fees?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I was thinking, because there's, uh, an, uh, an open-ended statement in the agreement that, uh, addresses the, the additional, any additional expenses that they may incur, and I would recommend that, if that is, uh, because it is open-ended, that we cap it at five hundred.
Okay, do we need to offer a supplement, or can that just be changed to what we're doing now?
It would be an approval to the contract, and, uh, approval of the contract subject to that amendment being made.
Okay. I need to make that in the form of a recommendation, uh, a motion, or?
Yes.
Okay, so I move then, uh, that we, uh, cap at five hundred dollars for the open-end or miscellaneous, uh, expenses.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Burgess, uh, Mr. Williams, and second, Mr. Burgess.
If I could ask for just clarification, is that an annual cap or per task? Is that your suggestion, Mr. Williams?
Um, let me yield to the recommendation of the city manager. So, um...
To answer the annual?
That's, that's an annual cap. Yes.
So, yes, it'll be included in annual.
I'm not really understanding, but this is a miscellaneous consulting contract for forty thousand dollars, and now you're capping it to five hundred dollars?
No, no, no. The, the contract is for forty thousand dollars, but it had a stipulation that it said, uh, plus additional expenses that they may incur. There was an open-ended statement, and that's what, uh, Councilman, uh, Williams was referring to. Uh, and I would, those are expenses that were copies and, and, you know...
So we're just talking about expenses?
Miscellaneous.
Expenses, not fees?
No, no fees. Miscellaneous expenses, and I'm recommending that we cap those five hundred, so ultimately you will not exceed four, forty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Forty thousand, five hundred. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we still need to vote on the RFQ, right?
On the, on the, um, resolution as amended.
Okay. We got the motion, we got a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nays? Motion carries, as amended. Um, alright, same thing, we're gonna one more time here.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Accepting Proposal and Approving Work Authorization Between the City and EAS Engineering Pursuant to Continuing Contract Award Under 2403, Providing For An Effective Date.
Okay, motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Staff report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, my vice mayor members of the city council, if you recall, this is, uh, we also hire EAS to monitor the lake, the lake excavation. As you recall, we were penalized by DORM because of the excess, uh, field taken, um, and this is, uh, in essence, uh, in conjunction, uh, as a response to the notice of violation of the consent agreement. Um, and the project involved, like, as I mentioned, the filling back of the lake, um, the, the project is pretty much, uh, term, uh, finished, the only thing that's left to do is the paperwork between DORM and the city, and they're being very instrumental in that process, so that's, this is a lot of part of, of that endeavor.
Okay, any further comments?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, this is the same firm we just approved for the last, I'd like to offer the same amendment, uh, and, and I'll, I'll go along with the same recommendation.
Okay, that's the five hundred dollar cap on miscellaneous.
Correct.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion's seconded, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, um, we have a motion and second in place for the 2403, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. That was number six. Number seven?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Approving Lobbying Services Agreement and Recognizing Competitive Bidding Exemption for Lobbying Services Agreement Between the City and South Florida REN Group in accordance with City Code, uh, two-dash-four, eleven-point-one-eight-two exemptions from competitive bidding and providing effective date.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Staff report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my vice mayor members of the city council, this is coming back to you because, um, the original intention, um, a few months ago, uh, when it first came before you, this issue with the REN group, um, it, uh, it had a proposal, they came in with a proposal of thirty thousand, uh, over two years, but there, um, we've been, after the decision was made, the decision was made in a way that it was split, uh, between two years, fifteen thousand each year. That was the end result after the meeting, and that's what you approved. Uh, but after that, they, we had a series of conversations, and, um, there was a misunderstanding in the way that they, we put the package together and the way that it was explained, we needed clarification on the issue. And what is really being presented to you today from the REN group is that they are proposing, uh, two-year contract, thirty year, thirty thousand each year. That is what's being proposed, uh, tonight. Um, they have, the REN group has been very instrumental, I should say, in, in acquiring, you know, in securing monies for us. Um, they had five hundred thousand grand for storm drain system that we secure, um, we had an additional five hundred thousand dollars for EOC, emergency operation-type funds, and they continue to work with us on a number of issues, as you know, as you've seen, they, they have been with us, uh, at the, in Washington and on, uh, at the state, uh, working on, and, and all the appropriations, uh, so I, at this time, I recommend that we move forward with the aforementioned.
Okay. And I think the confusion came basically when I asked for the applicant to, consultant to break it up to, from two years to one year. So immediately, we divided it in half, not only from one year to two year, uh, from two years to one year, but we also cut his money in half, is what we basically did.
In essence, what you have before you, nays, and one of your contracts...
Your contract with thirty thousand dollars, I got it. Okay. Any, any further questions from council?
Yes, I went back and looked at the, uh, video, and you're absolutely right, um, I think, uh, I asked for clarification as well, and, uh, so, uh, when I went back and looked, um, it was, uh, in our error, um, that we did this, so I think, uh, that this is a just cause to correct, um, our error here on the city. So, uh, I move it with such.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The other thing I noticed too is that the prior year's contract from '08 to '09 was also thirty thousand dollars, so, I mean, it's not like we've given any kind of increase. It was clearly a misunderstanding, and it's the same terms as the prior year's contract, and we're just making sure we're clarifying that.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nays? Okay, motion carries. Next item, the, uh, CDGV disaster recovery invitation phase two. I don't have the body, so I can't read it. I don't have it even in front of me. Glad you got to earn your money tonight.
Yes, this is just a motion to approve the acceptance of the RFP.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? No questions and comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Item carries. Next item. The, uh, parking wrecks.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Approving and Authorizing the Execution of the Agreement Between the City of Homestead and Sugar's Drop Shop LLC and Providing an Effective Date.
Motion?
Move it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Vice Mayor. Uh, staff report?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, my vice mayor members of the city council, I wish I could do this with every park, but, uh, what's before here tonight is, um, the, the maintenance and the general liability responsibilities and so forth, relative to the skate park, uh, Harris Field. Um, the proposal will, will realize savings in, it says, in fifteen thousand dollars, I assure you it's gonna be more, not to mention the, the liability and, and the headache and, and the manpower, uh, needs that, that that park requires constantly. Um, so, they, we have structured within that contract, uh, a, um, an upfront fee, a deposit of five hundred dollars, and they will pay us four hundred dollars on a monthly basis. In addition to that, in the last, I believe it's in, in the last six months of the contract, we will be profit sharing, uh, five, we will be sharing the portion, a five percent of the concession earnings, um, you know, five percent will be coming to us. Um, once, it's a year-to-year contract, once we're done with this year, we'll come back, hopefully, depending on how the revenues go, we'll, we'll negotiate, uh, negotiate that with you, and I'll bring it before you for approval, uh, next year. Hopefully, they'll do, they'll do good, we all expect them to succeed, and, um, uh, this is a good thing for us, so I highly recommend.
Very good, thank you. Yes. Vice Mayor?
Um, thank you. Um, I just want to say that this skate park has, has been a nightmare, just a complete nightmare. Um, when it was purchased in the prior administration, um, they didn't allot for the manning of the skate park, and it's just been a hangout, it's been, the chief can tell you, I mean, we've had call after call after call.
Gangs.
Gangs, I mean, horrible. The equipment, um, I have since found out, uh, was very outdated when we bought it, and not state-of-the-art, and that's why the other city wanted to get rid of it. So, I think this is a blessing, a true blessing, to have a company want to come in, take the liability, take over the maintenance of the, of the equipment, and do what we need to do, because we don't have the manpower to staff this thing, and Dennis has shaken his head, I mean, we, we actually closed it, um, it's been closed, because there was a man, uh, there was an incident, so, and the kids just jumped the fence, and they're in there night and day, we don't know, you know, how they get in, but they jumped the fence. So, I sincerely support this. Um, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Shelley?
Nice. The only question I had as far as the, um, the fees go, I mean, how does, how does the park, or how did it work in the past for our residents? If they want to use that park, was there a fee to use it, and then how's that gonna be affected going forward? Is there a set fee already?
Mayor and, uh, Mayor and council, uh, city manager, uh, Councilman Shelley, what it is, uh, the vendor will charge an entrance fee of approximately about two dollars, but I've also asked for twenty vouchers for residents that can't afford, so we'll have twenty vouchers for kids that can't afford it, that will help them out.
Twenty, twenty per day?
I, I ask for twenty, uh, a year for right now, depending on the workload, but I'm pretty sure with the vendor, he'll help us out in any way.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes, just want to make sure on the insurance piece, I know that our name still has to be required, but, uh, they are taking over the liability payment of the, of that particular insurance, because if they are, uh, at some point leasing it from us, uh, then they take on those liabilities as well.
Yes, they are.
So they will pay that, that portion?
Yes.
Okay. If, uh, if you can give me a number back on what that looks like, um, you know, the insurance portion?
A million dollars. The contract requires that they carry a million dollars per occurrence on, um, for insurance.
Right.
That was recommended by the, uh, purchasing department.
Right, I understand, I see, I see that. But the, the, what we were paying as a, as a city on that, or was it just left into all of our city property? It was left in all of our city property?
Umbrella. Alright. Thank you. Mr. Burgess?
Just, thank you. Just a, a point of clarification on the use of facilities, maybe Mr. Maytan can answer. It says, Monday through Friday, you know, three to eight, Saturday and Sunday, ten, except for summer, spring breaks and winter break and days off. What are they gonna do on those days, or what, what is...
Mayor and vice mayor, council, Councilman Burgess, uh, what that means is that during the school hours, it'd be three to eight, when they don't have school, or they're on summer break, it'd be ten to eight. So, the days that the kids will be out of school, they'll be open until ten to eight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
There's one thing I had, um, marked when I was going over this, in the agreement, um, item four, it says, um, Sugar's agrees to offer to, city residents twenty vouchers for the year, so if we want to make that in the gen, I think, or, as, you know, I mean, to me, I read this as saying every city resident gets twenty vouchers per year. Mr. Attorney?
Um, you know, their, what the agreement basically says, they're gonna give us twenty vouchers, you want to limit it to...
Well, if that, if that was what our, our directive was, was to make sure that we get enough for the children that can't afford the two dollars.
Okay, these, the way this is written, unless we add more language, is that basically this, um, these vouchers would come to the city, and the city council or the manager would have discretion under your direction as to how to use those vouchers. Mr. Mayor? You can put something more in here, but that's the way, right now, there's no direction as to how those vouchers are...
So that way, then, um, then we can give them to the Parks and Wrecks Department and use them as we saw fit, and they could apply for the vouchers, people could apply for the vouchers, correct?
I, I think that if, if it's the city's intent to administer those vouchers, then we should, then this, uh, contract needs to be clarified, to say that, that Sugar's agrees to provide the city with twenty vouchers each year, to be used at the discretion of the city for needy residents or something like that.
No, it says Sugar's agrees to offer city residents twenty vouchers.
No, I'm saying that if you want to do what you want to do, you should change the language to what I just said, it shouldn't be changed.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's like saying every city resident gets twenty vouchers, but I want more than twenty vouchers to give out to the kids.
More than twenty.
Yes.
We need to define need.
Right, that's, that's my thing, we, if we're gonna say it's ended, how are we gonna define it? Is there application process, what are their criteria? I mean, then it opens up a big sticky can of, you know, who is entitled, who's not entitled, so I think we really need to clarify that particular issue, and I agree, I think it should be more than maybe twenty vouchers, because twenty is very, consider all the kids that we had here that would utilize that park, um...
If I may offer, uh, suggestion, um, because we, we want to get this going, um, what I would like to do is, I would like to come back to you with some additional language that we can work out.
Has to go on the council agenda anyway, so you have your time between now and...
Yeah, so move it forward, right? Let's move it forward, and then, uh, we'll have to...
I have, I have more information, more specific information and definitions, so...
Well, Mayor, we, we have a Parks, I have a Parks and Wrecks meeting Thursday afternoon, so we could, uh, offer through the manager a recommendation, if that's alright with you.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Anything further, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. Alright, any, any further discussion on this? Mr. Shelley? Anyone? Yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. Okay, this next one, uh, Richard, is the, uh, Department of Justice, 2010 JAG grant.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Authorizing a Grant Award From the Department of Justice and Providing an Effective Date.
Motion?
Move it.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Alright.
Yes, sir, um, this year's grant is in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, um, and, um, is basically to fund the, the, um, is used for, to fund the overtime expenditures, um, to prevent, um, crime activity, including high-profile crimes, crimes such as narcotic, gang activities, robberies, burglaries, et cetera, throughout the city. And we're recommending approval. It's, it's just an, a reoccurring grant, the, all the years have been a little more money, this year went down a little bit than last year, so, but it's still, uh, you know, a grant.
So, can I help this out? General fund? Okay, uh, comments, questions, council? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
We have, you have two items, both, uh, contracts with the Florida Department of Health, if you want to take them together.
Yes, please.
I was, I was going to suggest...
Tab 11 and tab 12 with the same.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida, Authorizing Entering Into a Memorandum of Agreement Between the City of Homestead and the Florida Department of Health, Miami-Dade County Health Department, Providing For An Effective Date, this is not just tab 11, but tab 12.
Okay, motion?
Let me read tab 12 just for a second.
All right.
It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Homestead, Florida Approving And Adopting An Agreement Between Miami-Dade County Health Department, MDCHD, and the City of Homestead Providing For An Effective Date. They can both move together.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to vote on 11 and 12 at the same time. Motion to move forward?
Move it.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Items 11 and 12, pass, move forward, thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Okay, enjoy your evening. Thank you.
I love the meetings like this.